Slashing guy there. But. I just. I obviously.
I would at least.
As on their fairgrounds building, we're going to get them there.
All right, we will now resume the honorable session. Now it depends upon your break.
Concentration says. No, this.
It just, there are those that we have the update that I see. We signed back.
On make sure. Yeah. Yeah.
My father.
In some form or another.
Maybe it's a fair.
I don't know, they were together.
Because you keep saying.
Well, I think I'm in somewhere, I don't maybe trying to purchase that property.
I just.
Yeah.
That's why, that's why I saw, so I didn't.
Yeah.
Ten thousand wheels.
Yeah, because I don't know if there's really any road firms there other than, you know, to make that all work. No, there were three.
There's that little section.
Yeah.
You could get.
Because the county sold that at one point in time. Let's say to me, if we didn't sell that property, we would have had enough property then. Do what we wanted to do.
He did, he bought his solar power, you know.
Yeah, works. Yeah.
Did you get it? I'm going to give it to you. Was that tall? For the quarter. Right?
Where did you get?
Did you send it to us? And look at four, three, one, six, three. Oh, so pretty good. That's much better. Oh, that, okay, four, three, one, sixteen. Really, yeah, well, yeah. Is this max the county in the toll?
Oh, that's, okay, that's.
That's what it says. Ten thousand.
That made the king experience of sort of Gibson.
That's, is it a quarter? More this year, twenty-five percent more this year because of. They're asking for as many.
Yeah.
Presidents that receive meals on wheels, they have to pay something, don't they? I don't. But they had to pay a certain amount. Good service, I'm not. Speaking about.
Everybody has one of those.
Yeah.
Insurance covers some of it.
Yeah, I, I thought there was some sort of client responsibility.
That's a six. Six percent.
You mean.
You've got to see it back.
I think that they asked for, do you remember if they asked for more last year than the fifteen? Kind of.
Yeah, it sounds familiar.
Yeah, I thought they asked for twenty-five last year and get a fifteen. Well, they're asking for sixty-six percent. Right, increase ages. Ever the fifth, going from fifteen to twenty-five. They said that the food cost is twenty-five percent high. Oh, I see. Is that what I heard, or am I making it up? It's crazy. It's making me hungry, though. Pursue this. The signature from mine. Can you sign?
Shut up.
I'm.
Stay here.
Charging.
Charging.
He said, you're the charge me.
Yeah. How many do you need?
Fifty.
Fifty, okay.
One of those signatures on there might be worth something there.
Yes, I do.
Right now?
Yeah.
Okay.
We're not doing anything, it's not like. What we doing? Okay. We said our meeting go on Friday. We know perception, right now?
Not very good.
No.
Nine thirty, so perception. It's almost the perception.
Just got a message from David that Derby Township wanted to continue to have these meetings. So I said, that's all I said.
Uh, I feel there, I feel.
They can't have a meeting.
And then.
End those meetings.
Yeah, and I. Like, I was trying to pick my way to. Think about it before I say something, that's a big thing. What's the date today?
Fourteenth.
I'm a big piece of paper.
Oh, yeah, you did. I can't read. Uh. I had a, maybe what, I mean, I had a phone conversation with the mayor the day before.
Of Dublin?
But, oh. That didn't go well at all.
That didn't go well. No. Same stuff.
Accusations.
Yeah, yeah.
So. And that was one reason I thought it might be appropriate to continue a little bit more.
Thank you.
So.
Welcome.
Thank you, man.
And, yeah, you're welcome. But. If one will be, that must change, but then I think it's.
Yeah. Everybody's going to dig their heels in. I saw earlier, yeah. I did read the whole article, said they were making a fifty thousand dollar investment and something to do with the high speed rail.
Right, yeah. But really, that's.
Heard of this.
I mean, it's going to take millions.
Yeah. Correct it. Yeah. How long it'll take to build?
And it take the federal government, too.
Oh, yeah.
And it's dead on government, doesn't it?
Well, look at California, did how many billions California spend on high speed rail, never got it. They can't even, even, they don't even know where the money went.
I don't know, but the one in Japan's used. A lot.
Yeah. It amazes me, you know, when I went to Greece last winter, I was very surprised to see that rail system was so active, you know, so developed.
Yeah.
Out, Greece, you know, a country that was in debt, actually, it's coming out of the map, but really nice. You know?
Yeah.
They built it right before they have the, uh, politics there. And it's.
Yeah.
Is a possible high speed rail will become a major thing where the population gets to a point where the ability to navigate on high radiuses.
Well, like, for me. The longest trip I got. On a pretty, you know, every year, like, they were. High speed rail to go to Youngstown. Why would I want to drive?
There.
Right. I'd go up there every, every weekend from Carolina, so I didn't have to drive. And, you know, be there in an hour.
Be there faster.
Yeah. And then go to this. You know, I will need a car once I'm there.
I wanted to take the drive there.
Three and a half hours.
Yeah, you'd be there, yeah, you'd be there.
Bring this before.
Yeah, you could be there and you could maybe do what you need to do and visit with people you want to visit.
I'm saying, because I would do that more often.
Yeah.
Rather than thinking about driving three and a half hours, three and a half hours fast. The expense, the worry about somebody's going to hit you on the.
I knew what I mean, yeah. Take an hour.
Oh, yeah, well, I wouldn't.
Yeah, it's issue.
I think.
Yeah, when we got on.
This is a bomb to money, so they.
Okay, they're, they're, yeah, they're, that train was packed and there's one every, like, I forget how many minutes.
Yeah, it was.
Now, so far we're getting out, which stops, you got more people getting on by the time we got to. Yeah. And I'm not saying, was that I was on, it was high speeds, I didn't lose there. But it was about eighty-five, from the airport to the middle part of town. Four, two trains, one going, one stopping. It was nice, and it was a lot cheaper than paying for a taxi. And, uh. And you know, I was there.
And it's pretty comfy, so.
It's like. Comfort had nothing to do with this. Those people standing in the aisles, you know, and.
Um, yeah, I don't think they could stand on this one.
Yeah, I mean, it's doing. Yeah, but I'm just saying.
But it was very warm, we thought it's going to be.
Was it?
Oh, yeah.
Mine, no.
Yeah. And just a smooth.
Good magnets, arguably, hold it off.
You know, I don't know.
I think it is.
Yeah, it's like that, but it's. You would never know you're going that fast until you look out the window, so it's kind of whipped by you, but even then, it didn't seem like you were wrong about that.
And you got there in no time, but.
I think we were there in, uh. Amy, did how long did it take us to get to, yeah, was it two hours?
Yeah, well, twenty-two, thirty, yeah.
Do they have service in there too, if you want something?
I didn't know.
But that's something that drives the country.
It was nice, it was a nice ride.
I bet.
It's hard to look out the windows because first, because it was. Hurt your eyes.
See the person that killed by the solar panel on these cars? Ah, I think so, blew off that, yeah, I think it was a parking. It's a parking garage, you know, type deal, in the hurricane, if it's a hurricane, I don't know, and got it, tore it off.
It's a sale. It's a freaking sale. Just imagine if a tomato hits one of those fields, all would happen. Big sale, should have been there just right.
And we just sent the.
Yeah.
Link to the tomato sheet.
Okay.
I remember they, uh, if I remember right, they turned on and told them to minimize windshield. Um, the fields, but this was just ones, yeah, they parked on base in there, parking grabbers.
You talk about a giant sale, and we think about something that happened in Plain City, this is forty years ago, forty-five, almost forty-five. Uh. Had some people we knew that purchased a ping pong table in Plain City on plain two.
I think that's your best bet.
And they left. Do it on the top of their pickup, it's better than you want to get home, to take home, and they don't have any of those straps, and you didn't pick it out. What could happen? And so one of the boys laid on top of the ping pong table, and hung on to.
For weight.
Racked of the truck, or the topper, and hung on for dear life.
Oh.
Uh, and when I say for dear life, that's literally what it became when your brother was driving about fifty-five down on forty-two.
Oh.
Right, and after he lifted it off.
Well, sure he did.
Uh, um, they thought he was up to about the power lines.
Oh, my.
And it came back down. It was miraculous. All the guy had was skinned up toes, he was eating bear food. Uh, skinned up.
Of course it was.
Uh, he guaranteed it'd flood for a couple, few days, and then he was fine.
Yeah.
So, ping pong table became a sale.
Hmm, now, when I was young, my dad did some concrete works, he needed a couple pieces of plywood, we didn't have a truck. But we had a nineteen, six, and seven Pontiac. And we went about ten miles away to the lumberyard and put two sheets of plywood on top of it. And, uh, it was winter, and we, we, we had to roll the windows down and tie the back, we couldn't tie the, the front, because you had to still enter through the doors. And then he held and drove on one side. We got him home.
Didn't you really?
But I bet he didn't go fifty miles without.
My.
Yeah. And so. And God, he didn't ask me to get on pod.
Yeah, we couldn't believe it.
That's, yeah, you said it was miraculous.
They didn't spend a twenty-four hours in the hospital.
That's something.
I missed something.
I don't know what the video is named soon.
Watch football this weekend, did you? You didn't? I missed. You watched Blackout? No, I didn't, I lived. A bit of.
Yeah.
I was busy, very busy. And auction. This is a chicken auction.
Oh, it wasn't even an auction, it was an estate sale.
By any vices?
Four. That's just four.
Oh, geez, is that recent?
Last.
Nice.
Type rings, huh?
Wow. Nice, very.
He doesn't realize how privileged he is.
Yeah, yeah.
There's got some.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah.
Um, so G two, that G two is. Both of them are twelve years as well.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, so.
Yeah.
He's a good.
There she goes. A little pull with the air, but.
I have business early this morning.
Maybe.
I didn't want to take care of the business.
Resolution approving the payment of invoices by Madison County Auditor.
So moved.
Second.
First and second, any other discussion? Uh, Bert, roll call please.
Mr. Shane?
Yes.
Mr. Sneakus?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Resolution approving travel requests for Jennifer Hunter, the Madison County Auditor, and Billy Rogers, the Chief Deputy Auditor, attend the C AAO twenty-twenty-five winner conference.
So.
First and the second, any other discussion? Uh, Bert, roll call please.
Mr. Shane?
Yes.
Dr. Sneakus?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Resolution approving the final wage compliance report for the Madison County twenty-twenty-four CDVG program, Madison County Board of Developmental Disabilities Playground Project.
So moved. Second.
First and the second, any other discussion? Uh, Bert, roll call please.
Mr. Shane?
Yes.
Dr. Sneakus? Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
A resolution approving the notice to proceed and notice of commencement for the Madison County Board of Developmental Disabilities Parking Improvements Project.
So moved.
Second. First and the second, any other discussion? Uh, Bert, roll call please.
Mr. Shane?
Yes.
Dr. Sneakus?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
A resolution approving a transfer in the twenty-twenty-five ditch budget for ditch equipment.
So moved.
Second. First and the second, any other discussion? Uh, roll call please.
Mr. Shane?
Yes.
Dr. Sneakus?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
A resolution approving a transfer from the general fund to the twenty-twenty-five gas tax budget for the Jump Road Rehabilitation Project.
So moved.
First and the second, any other discussion? Uh, Bert, roll call please.
Mr. Shane?
Yes.
Dr. Sneakus?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
A resolution approving the combined bid award for the maintenance and renovation work at the, at three oh six Lafayette Street, London.
Second.
First and the second, any other discussion? Here none, roll call please.
Mr. Shane?
Yes.
Dr. Sneakus?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
A resolution approving an increase in appropriations for the Madison County Board of Elections.
So moved.
First and the second, any other discussions? Here none, roll call please.
Mr. Shane?
Yes.
Dr. Sneakus?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
A resolution, this was a resolution that was, uh, sent to me in error last week for a ditch maintenance transfer. Um, it was an old one, and so it got approved, but I'm rescinding that. So, resolution rescinding resolution number four fifty-eight twenty-five, approving a transfer in the twenty-twenty-five ditch maintenance budget.
So moved.
First and the second, any other discussion? Here none, roll call please.
Mr. Shane?
Yes.
Dr. Sneakus? Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
And the resolution that I mentioned in the email, um, is no, is not needed, so about that.
Good.
Thanks.
So.
We will have to hear a conversation.
There are plenty of things.
Yeah, yeah, I'll take a look.
Can't put it out of mind.
I leave my lips, that's all, yeah. All good.
It's come.
Oh, there's a next report, okay, I, I didn't know. So I did, there's nothing, yeah. Yeah, this. Thing has like about five minutes, right, we're not pulling it in after. Just thinking about it.
Where is coming? I'm going to have a crowd today.
A lot of the, pardon the joy, the parking owners are from the, like, the commercial part of the parking, so, and I think most of them around the state, and I had a couple conversations with them, so, like, I don't think we can come in, but I thought the golf course would be here. But they'll, yeah, be a quick one again. I got, got the cost, you know, some rain cost and everything, so they could probably, really can't move forward, be my guess, so.
I've launched with community there.
And then just. Eight, halfway.
We send them some sales.
Pretty extended.
I mean, it'd be amazing.
Would be resumes?
Mm-hmm.
It is starting to slow down.
Only think you definitely have four.
Oh, but we have probably ten that are actually qualified.
Yeah. Sign me for a subscription.
I see. I usually have, like, a whole pile of on my computer, but.
That can never come.
We provide honestly.
Yeah, the job, though. It's what I've added, affirmative, that's it. I like, I love the cost savings, I really. Perhaps Paris should lose next.
Saving costs on equipment.
It is now nine forty-five, this is the time we set aside for a ditch hearing. With the building ground lateral number five. Turn it over to our president, Thomas.
I guess no one's here.
It's a great public hearing. Good people.
Still, uh. Go through a couple of. The high points. Where it is, is, um, the golf course is one of the petition, this is an extension of, an extension, basically, so, back in two thousand and seven, this was a glade run one ninety-eight, so we did the openage from right around the railroad tracks up to right here. Then a few years later, in two thousand and eleven, we extended the ditch up to the corner of the golf course. Originally, the tile for this, uh, the old glade run lateral went through the golf course. So this park near here ended up doing an open ditch, they did that on their own dollar, put that in, never was full of maintenance, so over the years, it kind of grew up, trees silted in and everything. So that's what the golf course is pitching right now, this yellow, or the green line here is to reestablish that. So that's what the golf course is pitching right now. This yellow or the green line here is to reestablish that open ditch. Um, it's just. Basically going to be dipping out and. There we go. Okay. So this is the main, main part of the ditch. It's the existing ditch, as I said. All we're going to be doing is reestablishing it, dipping out the silt. Um, there's a few trees. Some trees down in here, which there's a couple pictures later that we even showed, those are probably need to come out. So it's a fairly, fairly simple and quick. Quick project for us. Uh, this is the watershed. The yellow line represents the watershed. So here's the line here, as you can see, most of it. You know, half of it is the commercial areas. We got corn here, corn here, um, probably soon to be cornfall here. And so it's approximately nine hundred and sixty-eight percent drain to it. So it's a fairly, fairly large watershed. So the cost per acre should be pretty low. Um, for those of you weren't here last time, this is the, um. This is kind of what the ditch looks like. As you can see, it's actually in very good shape. You do have some cattails just from the beginning. It's fairly flat, which we'll go out and get some elevations on that later. Uh, see what kind of grade we can put into it. But all it really needs is just some, just some dip it out and a little spread of spoil. Along, you know, out in the field and, and spread it out. This is the, the trees that I was talking about. Not very many, just a little bit of shrubs. This is kind of towards the end. You got the golf course on the, on the right-hand side. Um, I still have to get with the golf course to see if they want to keep those trees in there or not. If I had money into the estimate to take, it's having to just be taken out either way, they're trying to come outside of the ditch. This is the, the very end of the ditch. So this is our existing ditch here where it goes into it. This is looking back up north. So those are the trees that I was talking about. These trees and everything, those will come out and. And wasn't sure if the golf course needed those for shield, you know, since they're, the T's right there. They want that as a hazard or, or whatever. That'd be a conversation I'll have with the, um, golf course. That's pretty much it. Um, you know, the procedure, we've already done the due. This is the first hearing. So the, the next step would be to, um, if you guys approved, we would go towards the assessment stage, which we would send out. delivery assessments to all the property owners. So that gives them a rough, kind of a rough estimate of what they expect to pay. And then you can schedule, well, also at that same time, we schedule a, a final hearing. It's anywhere from twenty-five to ninety days after we send out the assessments. And then with that final hearing, we will come in with the plan. We have a benefit cost analysis. And then we make our recommendation to the commissioners as far as, you know, to approve it, to go forward to the construction of it. And then once that approved, we'll go out, since it's only going to be roughly around twenty-five thousand dollars, we don't have to bid it out. But we always go out to a couple of local contractors. I'll get great quotes from them and then we'll just pick from there. Or it's also an option if we have time and the availability, our crews can do the, do the ditch as well. Um. Let's see here. I do have some. You'd have the cost estimate to hear, wanted to. Okay, so this is kind of a estimates I have. It's roughly twenty-eight, hundred and sixty feet. So I have about six, six dollars a foot. Um, boss wire hopefully will come in a little bit under. Uh, I got just a lumbstone for treatment removal and disposal around two thousand. Uh, rock channel. Uh, there's a couple of big, big terms in that ditch, so may think about some rock channel in there. Investigate that to see if it's really needed or not. But I added costing to that as well. Seeding grading. There will be a little bit of seeding. Um, you know, the hope is they'll just need to dip out the bottom and not really mess with the banks too much, because the banks of the ditch seem pretty. Pretty in good shape. So it might just be dipping out some of the silt in the bottom, uh, spread out and just do a rough seeding. And grading of, of those issues. Um, add all that contingency in there. So we got roughly, you know, twenty-six and a half thousand dollars. Um, with an area of nine hundred and sixty feet or nine hundred and sixty acres, it allows for around twenty-seven dollars of. An acre for benefited property unit. So whatever property owner, whatever land is in that watershed, they'll be assessed. Twenty-six or twenty-seven dollars per acre of that. Um. That's pretty much it. I don't know if anyone had any questions. Actually, this number will be a little bit. That might be a little bit higher. I'll have to, I'll check those numbers, but.
Very good.
Thank you, sir.
I didn't know. Any questions for Ken?
Any questions?
After you incur the final cost, then you determine the.
Yes, and after we read the final cost, we do the final assessments, which will, you know, be that number, divide that into the final cost. Or, you know, per acre, send that to you for your approval. And then we send those to the auditor and then they send out, they'll send out letters to people where they have the option of, they can either pay it off upfront. It's under a certain amount, they have to pay it off. I think under five hundred dollars, they have to pay it off in months. Uh, if it's above that, I think they have two years to a certain amount. Then after that, they can put it on the tax bill for a five-year period. So they give them, I think, thirty to forty-five days to respond back to it before they, the auditor will put it on the taxes. And then they will occur, uh, maintenance costs, such as usually we start out at five percent of the construction cost. And that's, that's for mowing and any other future, future costs that might be incurred.
Thank you. Very good.
So, I guess, my, my thought would be, since there's no objections, that we go forward to the, uh, assessments. You know, preliminary assessments, we get those now though, and then we can also try to schedule, um, a final hearing.
Yep, let's do that.
So we can see that, um. I think. Final assessments, we really don't need to schedule a meeting for those. I just submit those to you at your, at a meeting. And then, um, you mail those out. And I don't think I need. Need much time for a sudden, as long as we could probably.
You tell me the date now, I'll tell you when.
Okay, let's do. We could do on, on election day, election day, let's do the November eighteenth for the. Or we could do, let's do. Is the fourth going to be okay, since that's election day? I don't know if you guys have anything.
Most of the.
Okay. So we can, we could do November fourth for the preliminary assessments. Day, so. If we do the. In.
November fourth at ten?
Yeah.
And that would be the.
This is preliminary assessments.
When their assessments are here to prove those.
And that's all. Really, uh, I guess you really don't need a, um, formal meeting for those.
Could it be a resolution?
We're just submitting that to you.
So it'll just be a resolution, so we don't need to put a meeting on it.
Yeah, you have to.
All right.
Yeah. I'll get those to you before that.
And then we need a date for the final.
And the final hearing. Um. We want to get it done. We could make it the six, December sixteen. That way we, I still get, I still get it done. I just wondered. I have to plan to get.
Makes sense.
So it shouldn't take, it shouldn't take very long to do something like that.
Sounds, it's pretty straightforward.
Yeah.
Dan, remind me, do we need to take any official action today?
Um.
Or just schedule those following?
I think you. Um, I think you actually just passed a resolution to.
To accept the.
Accept that or schedule the final, or the schedule of the assessment.
What are we accepting? What exactly are we accepting today?
You're accepting the.
Petition?
Petition.
Petition, yeah.
To go full. So you're not, yeah, because you can, the first hearing is, you know, you guys either accepted or rejected.
Yeah.
So.
Except and then schedule final.
Schedule the final, yeah, schedule the final and, and assess.
So we can do accept the petition, but also schedule the final hearing for December sixteen.
At. Uh, let's do ten fifteen.
At ten fifteen. We have a motion to accept the ditch petition and also to schedule the final hearing for December sixteen at ten?
Fifteen.
Fifteen. But I'll make that motion. And I'll say, you're the first and the second. Any other discussion? None heard? Roll call please.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Dr. Znikus?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Very good.
And at the project, we don't, don't get used to these hearings being this easy. Can be a little dicey at times, but.
Keep seeing them, are they?
Be bringing in that, for that conservation ditch that we had talked about previously, we'll be bringing that contract in. Because, um, did that, uh, and we got, uh. Got approved and then the property owners are all, so Vernik will be trying to move forward.
So that's good.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate the input. It's gonna rain.
I got locked out. Prove that it doesn't rain, you can carry those across the hall, talking to the, uh, honorable Chris Brown. Got locked out of the, uh. Got it. I'll see you guys.
See ya. Take care, bud.
We don't have anything until eleven, because that's when they could come in.
Yeah. We're good enough. I see these. Well, we just, uh, wait.
I'm going to stop recording.
Please. We'll recess until eleven AM. How about that Hoosiers football team?
We want it.
Like the team.
Something we haven't.
Ryan Tigers and Buckeyes. Like the team.